Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September 13th, 2004 meeting of the Halton City Council. We welcome those of you who are here in our council chambers. We also welcome those who are watching on HCTV, whether it's the live broadcast tonight or if it's one of the delayed broadcasts. We're always honored to have our citizens interested in what goes on at our council meetings, and we appreciate that very much. Our invocation and pledge tonight is being led by Councilmember Kim Reese. Kim, I believe you have a guest here?
Yes, Mayor, I have asked Bobby Harper to come up and do the invocation for me.
If you will, let's please stand for the invocation and for the pledge to follow.
Father, I come to you in the precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Father, I ask you to bless this council with the mayor and the citizens of Halton City, Lord. I ask you to forgive us where we failed you and help us and guide us and lead us. Help these council members, Lord, to lead our city. Give them power and strength and wisdom, Lord. You said, "If any man elect wisdom, let him be asked of me, who I'll give freely." And, Lord, I ask you to bless the police force and our firemen, Lord, on the job and protect them and guide them, Lord, that they may make good decisions for our community. Thank you for all that you do for us. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We began our council meeting tonight with some announcements, and the first one I need to make is regarding Councilmember Dale Clark. Councilmember Clark is a public safety officer at DFW Airport. They've encouraged him to work this evening, and so he's having to be out there, and we're sorry he's not able to be here, but we appreciate the work he does in the public safety area. So as we proceed tonight, we will do so without Councilmember Clark being present. Mr. Muir, I think we have two or three announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. As Fran Burns is making her way up, I'm gonna let the people know that at the last council meeting, we talked about, told the public about, the first annual Gary Hires softball game. This is between our Police Department and Fire Department, and the Fire Department has bragging rights. They beat the cops. So, a lot of fun. Look forward to it next year. It's gonna be an annual event, and so look forward to the community coming out for that. Fran?
Thank you, Mr. Muir. I have a couple things to remind our residents about, and the council, and the mayor, and the people here. This coming Saturday, September the 18th, the Fire Rescue Department will be having their open house. Starts at 10:00 and ends at 3:00 at the new central fire station. So for anyone that has not had the opportunity to tour the station, it will be open during those hours. There'll be free refreshments. You can get up close to the equipment, meet the personnel, learn about fire safety and fire prevention, and if you have any questions, you can call the Fire Hall at (759) 8660. And also, on that same day, September the 18th, will be the annual Trinity Trash Bash, which is something that our board, our beautification board, has been involved in for several years. At 8:30 in the morning, the four cities that are Birdville communities will be hosting their own cleanups onsite in their own cities. Anybody that wants to help in Halton City is invited to come to the Birdville Environmental Study Center, which is directly across the street from Halton High, register at 8:30 and help pick up litter along the creek, Big Fossil Creek. And then at 10:00, everyone that's participating in all four communities is invited to our first Water Fest, and the Water Fest is just an educational opportunity for people to learn about the importance of keeping the Trinity River clean. It is our water source for most of us in northeast Texas. Some of the things that will be going on, and this begins at 10:00 again, there'll be people from the TCEQ talking about Texas Watch, which is a volunteer water monitoring program. There's the Extension Service from Tarrant County will be out with their water wagon, which is a demonstration of what happens when the storm drains kick in, we have a lot of rain, and what happens when water runs off. There'll be EnviroScape demonstrations. There'll be experts talking to you about mosquitoes. We'll have some fun games for kids and adults. We'll have SmartScape CDs, trash art contests, free hot dogs and beverages, door prizes and giveaways, and we hope everybody will come. And I know the mayor's been invited to participate in a challenge with the three other cities' mayors at 11:00 that morning, and I think it has something to do with trash and water and boots and that kind of thing. So I hope you all will come, and if you have any questions, please call me at my office, (222) 7767. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Burns, and I believe that concludes the announcements and the events in our meeting tonight. We have a special presentation to be made at this time, and Mr. Muir, if you would like to introduce that, please.
Sure. I'd like to introduce Bob Hamilton. He's the president and CEO of the Northeast Tarrant Chamber. He's gonna be talking to us today about the Quad Cities DFW Foundation.
Thank you, Tom, Mayor. Good to have you all here. It's good to have a full council again in representing one of our four cities of the Chamber of Commerce. We wanted to take this opportunity, we're making the rounds at all the cities at this time of the year, to introduce ourselves to the city councils and also to the school boards, both of BISD and Keller ISD, as well as our own Chamber of Commerce, to alert them and update you on the goings-on of the Quad Cities DFW Foundation, which I have brought you some literature tonight for you to study, and we'll have a test on it later, and also one of our most recent newsletters, so you can get an idea of the economic development efforts going on in our own backyards here in the Quad Cities. And Halton City was one of the first cities to join on board with us when we cranked this up about two years ago in our planning processes to improve the quality of life, but most important, to build economic diversity within our area. So I wanted to update you on what's happened over the past year. Obviously, we are a multiple public relations and marketing arm of the four cities, and we have had some phenomenal success stories over the past year and a half in building that name, awareness, and branding ourself as the place to do business and a place to bring your families and build your homes and participate in your own community. A few weeks back, we joined partnership with Channel Eight, the Beelow Corporation, and hosted Family First Series. And Halton City was very active in that effort, the four cities, the two school districts. We went up north to your neighbor in Watauga at their recreation center and hosted it, but more importantly, we really exposed ourself to the North Texas region on the great quality of life we enjoy, and so we've brought a video clip tonight, very short for you to take a look at, and we'd like to see that now, please.
More than 2,000 people came out to the Watauga Community Center to celebrate Family First Day in the Quad Cities.
Most of them came to see Janet St. James, I'm told.
Wow, no.
The Quad Cities, in case you're keeping track, North Richland Hills, Watauga, Halton City, and Richland Hills, they're known for their great community spirit. They sure showed it yesterday. Channel Eight's Brad Hawkins reports. Family First Day in the Quad Cities kicked off with lots of fun festivities outside with News Eight's Alonda Walker. North Texans were entertained with special performances by some of the local bands. And many enjoyed watching entertainers dance. There were some special exhibits, including classic cars.
It's our secret recipe, only known for Richland Hills.
The mayors and city officials enjoyed friendly competition between the cities with a chili cook-off. News Eight's Jim Douglas was on hand to announce the winner.
North Richland Hills, the best chili in the Quad Cities. For you guys, alright, thank you very much. I'll take a bowl to go.
In the afternoon, the Family First Healthy Living Expo, hosted by News Eight's Gloria Campos and Janet St. James, was a big hit. The gym was packed with health and medical organizations giving body scans, health screenings, and checkups. To relax those sore muscles, many received chair massages. There were demonstrations of body workouts, physical routines, and martial arts. Even a few prize giveaways.
Thank you very much.
During one of the Healthy Living Seminars, special guest, former Dallas Cowboys safety George Teague, demonstrated how to make an obstacle course at home for the whole family to get in shape.
Step in with your left foot first, two feet on each foot. Yup. Okay, go. Very nice.
Heart disease is the number-one cause of death of men and women in the United States. In the cardio seminar, Dr. Lita Ogdom explained some of the risk factors.
Studies have shown that a smoker will have a heart attack 19 years earlier than one smoker.
Dr. Felicia McCloud Abrams showed how diabetes affects more than 18 million Americans, and over a third of those don't know they have it.
Diabetes is the fifth-leading cause of death in the United States. It also affects different organ systems. It's a leading cause of heart disease.
And many folks walked away with some good and practical advice for living healthier The Family First, Brad Hawkins, Channel Eight News.
Didn't have any chili?
I didn't have any chili.
Come on.
And they gave out free food there. Thousands of people from the Quad Cities, what a wonderful turnout. Thank you very much for your hospitality. And they gave out free food there. Thousands of people from the Quad Cities, what a wonderful turnout. Thank you very much for your hospitality. We had a great day out there yesterday.
Good for you. Lots of people there.
Yes.
One of the things I wanted to point out were the comments, community spirit, and how they continue to reinforce that, and it was a great day for all of us. It was a great marketing effort on behalf of the Quad Cities also, and we got tremendous exposure, positive reinforcement for what things going on in our cities. We also wanted to bring you up to date that this past summer, we attended the International Shopping Center Convention in Las Vegas. You were represented by Kent Flynn. Your Economic Development Foundation was up there. We brought back over 200 leads of businesses that are looking, or corporations that are looking to build in our region. Those are now also receiving our newsletters, that you have a copy of here, which again reinforces the reason to bring their businesses to our four cities. We are also very active members in the North Texas Commission Association of Realtors. We'll be attending their conference this month. We just finished up two weeks ago at the North Texas Commercial Brokers Association over in Dallas, where we brought back another 75 leads of commercial investors that are looking to continuously look for opportunities in where to build and where to invest their dollars. We are members of the North Texas Commission. We're a partner with them. We are also members of the Tarrant County Coalition of, Transportation Coalition, which your good mayor is a participant and manager. City Manager Muir also attends those meetings, so you have a very active voice in what goes on transportation-wide in your area. Last year, excuse me, this past year, we held our first annual stakeholders meeting. 175 of our stakeholders in this area attended to hear about and get a good report card of why life is so good where we live and do business. Wanted to remind you that the goals of the foundation remain to lengthen our marketing arm, have the opportunity to promote the Quad Cities, to build continuity amongst the four cities and the two school districts in the chamber, and keep that line of communication open up at all times. We really believe that we are much, much stronger as a partnership than we are standing alone, and that's proven its worth to us already. As a focus in this year and next year, the Board of Directors for the Quad Cities has focused on recruitment of industries to our Quad Cities area that are futuristic a little bit maybe in our minds, but they're businesses and they are corporations that are looking to invest in our area, including aerospace and communications. To continue marketing both locally and nationally, we plan to publish a guide to our cities this next year, to continue to have a united front on all transportation issues, especially what's going on with Loop 820, the vitalization of multi-jurisdictional corridors, including Highway 377, what's going on between our friends in Watauga and Halton City up and down Highway 377, Loop 820, and then we'll also be focusing on Grapevine Highway and that area. And last but not least is our focus on business retention. We're trying to figure out ways that we can, if possible, show even more appreciation to our business community and identify those that are at risk of moving or closing and be able to work with them before that ever happens where they leave holes in our cities. We did want to mention that our website remains one of our most positive ways to communicate. Over 50,000 hits a month to our website from out of this area. We had over 300 businesses opened up in the Quad Cities in 2003. You've probably seen the billboard out there on the highway on Loop 820 that touts the Quad City efforts, which are that we have more than $1.5 billion in annual sales here in our four cities, and we have more than $100 million in new construction. Those are pretty powerful statements and numbers that speak well for us. So, thank you on behalf of the Quad Cities DFW Foundation and the Chamber of Commerce too for your support. There is again a brochure and a newsletter and a mug there as a gift of appreciation. Our promotional and marketing efforts are well underway, and we just want to thank you for being such great partners. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me the time.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. We appreciate you being here this evening. Always welcome to our council meetings, and we appreciate the report you've brought. With that presentation having been made at this time, we move now to the consent agenda. For the information of members of the audience, items number two and three are being pulled from the consent agenda. These are the second readings of the budget for this coming fiscal year, as well as the tax rate, setting the tax rate to fund that budget. So that having been said, I am ready now for a motion regarding the wishes of the council on the consent agenda consisting of items one, four, five, and six. Councilmember Hutchison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I recommend for approval items number one, four, five, and six on the consent agenda.
Have a motion? Do I have a second? Councilmember Sutton?
That's for a second, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. If you'll register your votes, I will display them. And that passes by unanimous vote of the council present. We move now to item number two, which is the second reading of the proposed budget for fiscal year, beginning October 2004, ending September 30th, 2005. Mr. Muir, any comments from you at this point?
If there's any questions from the council, I'll certainly be glad to field them forth from the citizens for that matter.
Okay, there being no questions from the council, we do not have on item number two a request to address the council. I'm ready for a motion then regarding item number two, the second reading of the ordinance to approve, to adopt the budget for the coming fiscal year. Councilmember Sutton?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move that we approve ordinance number 0-2004-016-03 concerning the budget for fiscal year, beginning October 1, 2004, and ending September 30, 2005, second reading.
Have a motion? Councilmember Lanford?
Just a second.
Councilmember Hutchison? Second also. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the proposed budget for the coming year. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, there being none, if you will register your vote, I will display it, and it passes by unanimous vote. Item number three is the second reading of the setting the tax rate to fund the budget that we've just taken action on, and we do have one member of the audience who had filled out a request to appear before the council, Mr. Bill Jornay. Mr. Jornay, if you will, come forward at this time, and if you will, state your name and address for the record, and you wish to speak on the subject of the tax increase.
Thank you. My name is Bill Jornay. I live at 4529 Nadine. You have compromised our freedoms simply to maintain order among the races and minorities. Still segregation exists. You have created a sales tax and indirectly allowed state to rob us of most of it. Rather than enlarging and enhancing our police patrols as once was proposed, it's been used to create for us a more complacent government, quote, "services for our citizens," that we may, we never voted for. Oh, well. We did, however, voice our concerns for police patrols, safer streets, and more freedom to move about, especially for the children, especially after hours. Your best reply? Oh, well. Business and government on all levels have assured us, have assured the trusting and vulnerable and the elderly, that these many people flowing into our country illegally were only taking jobs no one else would do. We now know that they are taking every job that they can get, from executive on down. Oh, well. Now manufacturers that have moved out of our borders across our world bring us cheaper products than those we have come to trust, but consequently, because of poor economy created by the influx of illegals, no one can afford these products. Oh, well. These people blindly invited by business and government on all levels are doing exactly what was expected of them. No longer need you lead us with evasion and the integrity of democracy, but through evasion and deceit, you control the masses with ignorance and fear for the sole purpose of a cheaper dollar and a dumb revolt. Oh, if only there were no middle class, the haves and the have-nots are much more suitable for those with power and great wealth. This equates to a new democracy, soon to follow the dictates of a one-world order, a plutocracy controlled by power and money. When confronted by concerned citizens, our partisan politics in all levels of government will confront us with, oh, well. Our welfare system's designed to care for the less fortunate, the elderly, and handicapped is sorely being taken advantage of by the guardians of those funds, our leaders. They are now supporting, even financing, this illegal slave trade, supporting their elderly and terminally ill before our own, and any attempt to close the gap between the extremely powerful businessmen and the extremely poor working class is a futile attempt at best, often met with, oh, well. Our insurance-related healthcare programs designed to take care of all taxpaying American citizens is compared to the high-rolling gamblers' very sick joke, especially when the vast influx of illegals consume every advantage once offered our citizens, and neither our government or the business using this slave trade hold themselves responsible. Oh, well, that's business. Even the illegals with money have learned the means and methods of, quote, "working the system" and get healthcare, housing, food, even social security, free. Oh, well. This done against the wishes of the working class. Our education dollars are driven to teach English to those many illegals so they can better consume our jobs and corrupt our economy. Their children are in our, quote, "independent" schools, being babysitted so their parents can better afford the time for their labor. Work that, at, pardon, work at what once was our jobs. Now you want to increase the taxes on citizens who have lost their jobs to this imagination. In response, you tell us, oh, well. The hardest part is when concerned citizens confront you, our leaders, with this very serious, growing, constantly problem, and you knowing all the while what is taking place, supporting this behavior for your own self-interest, and you don't mind answering. Oh, well. This will, sooner than you think, have its adverse effects against you, at the polls, hopefully, for ignoring the wishes of those who have placed their trust in you, the dependent, the vulnerable, as well as the genuine concerned working-class American citizens. Quietly, subtly, we will offer after the next election and send you through revolving doors, offering you our very best, oh, well. Now a quote from Napoleon Bonaparte, "I recognize the superiority of a man by the greater or lesser degree with which he uses the art of lying. Those who would rule the world have all been habitual liars." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jornay. That's the only member of the audience who had filled out a request card to speak to the council on this item. I do want to make just one comment before I ask for a motion regarding this. This is the second reading of setting the tax rate, and the tax rate is being increased by two cents per $100 evaluation, actually technically .02078. On the average home in Halton City, that tax increase amounts to four cents a day. Four cents a day. Do the math and check that out. In return for that four cents a day, we are adding two police officers, a dispatcher, animal control officer, and some other things. But I think it's important for our citizens to understand and have correct information regarding the impact of the two-cent increase on the tax rate for the average homeowner in Halton City. And having said that, I'm in line for a motion regarding the wishes of the council regarding item number three, the setting of the tax rate to fund the budget that we approved just a moment ago. Councilmember Hutchison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to recommend for approval ordinance number 02004-021-03 for the tax rate, please.
Councilmember Reese?
That's for a second.
Councilmember Lanford?
Just for a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Sutton?
Mayor, I believe, just a point of information, I believe that's ordinance number 01703, and I don't know if that was read correctly.
My mistake, I read the wrong ordinance.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure for the record it's correct.
For the record, let's change it back to the correct ordinance, which is 01703, please. Thank you, Mr. Sutton.
Councilmember Sutton?
Nothing, I was just gonna say, I've been there before. I've done that before.
Any further discussion on the motion we have before us? Okay, there being none, if you'll register your vote, and it passes by unanimous vote of the council present. Having addressed the items on the consent agenda, we move now to the item seven first, and then we'll come to item number eight. These are public hearings, and there will be no need on either of these for anyone in the audience to fill out a speaker's request card at the appropriate time. Members of the audience will be given an opportunity to address the council regarding both of these issues at this time. Mr. Muir, you want to introduce the first of these public hearings, item number seven?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, what you have before you is an ordinance amending the current budget, the FY0304 budget that will be ending here in a couple of weeks. This is the one and only budget amendment that we'll be having. Joel's gonna talk to us about it, but this is mainly of bookkeeping, cleaning up some of the issues that have gone on during the year. Joel's gonna go into it a little bit more further detail before the public hearing. Joel?
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. The Texas Local Government Code specifies that a city council may amend its adopted budget for municipal purposes. The city charter also specifies that the council may amend the budget for the reasons that it deems necessary, as long as it follows the same procedures that is used for adopting the budget, which is why we're having a public hearing tonight and consideration of an ordinance to amend the budget for this fiscal year, not the year that has just been considered, but the fiscal year, October 1st, 2003, through September 30th of 2004. As the manager said, this is basically for housekeeping purposes. All of the items that I'm gonna be talking about and all of the funds that I'm gonna be talking about or in which we're gonna be requesting amendment contain items that have already been previously approved, and the primary purpose of this action tonight is to bring the budget up to date with the council's decisions that they've already made, or in the case of some of the capital improvement funds, updating the status of the capital budgets for these particular programs. In the past, this has been done one- programs. In the past, this has been done one time a year at the end of the fiscal year. Due to some, some changes that have occurred during this fiscal year, we've wound up doing it this way one last time. I can assure you that in the future, these are not going to be done at the end of the year. The manager's philosophy on this is that it needs to be done on an as-needed basis, which means as the decisions are made, we need to be coming back to the council promptly. So as we're not bringing a massive number of changes, or even old changes, even if it's just a few changes, by, at the end of the fiscal year, we are asking for the, the budget for the 2004 fiscal year to be increased to fifty-four million, nine-hundred-forty-thousand, two-hundred-seventy-six dollars. This is the amount in section two of the ordinance. The, the primary reasons for the changes, of which there are about four-point-three million dollars total in changes, is centered around, as I mentioned, the capital projects funds. These funds, the expenditures for these funds were adopted by the councils when the debt was issued that finances these improvements. And so the expenditures are authorized, but as we adopt the budget each fiscal year, we adopt the budget for a phase of these projects. By the end of the year, we, we find that in some cases, we've progressed farther than we expected. And, for example, the, the completion of the central fire station, the completion of the municipal services center, which is the municipal services administration offices, and the fleet services center across the street from it, the completion of much of the projects in the sewer system rehabilitation fund, which was the changes mandated by EPA, which we sold bonds to accomplish. We made it farther in terms of expenditures in the recreation center renovation fund than we had originally expected. And also during the course of the year, back in the very early part of calendar year, of the, of the calendar year, about the second quarter of the fiscal year, we sold tax notes in the crime district to acquire equipment. And so by ordinance, the council was, was approving those expenditures, but we had not yet amended the budget for these expenditures. I'm gonna just briefly just talk about each of the funds, there's only nine, so I'll just briefly touch upon the purposes and changes in the nine funds that we're asking for supplemental appropriations. And first, of course, is the general fund, where we're asking for additional funds to account for the, the, the incentive longevity payments that were approved by the council, I believe in December of last year, that were to be paid for with the proceeds of land sales. Turns out the land sales are going to be considered by the council tonight, is, I believe. In the debt service fund, we are asking for a change in the total appropriation there, primarily due to a change in accounting, not an actual, it's not additional spending, it's just a change in an accounting practice by which in the past, we have paid for debt service out of the crime district fund, directly out of the fund to, to the paying agent. We are now funneling all of our payments from the crime district fund into the debt service fund to be put together with, with other payments due at the same time, and making one payment from that fund. We had budgeted to expend the money from the crime district, but we had not budgeted to expend the money from the debt service fund. So it's, it's actually the same dollar, it is just moving from one fund into another fund and then going to the paying agent. In the crime control and prevention district fund, we're asking for additional funds for, or we're asking for authorization for to be, for the usage of the tax notes that the council approved, a couple of grants for training and for overtime that were accepted during the course of the year, but the budget was never amended for that, and for some personnel costs, again, tied back to the incentive payments that occurred this past December with council approval. And the court technology fund, I guess it was last month, the council approved the expenditure of funds from the court technology fund for the acquisition of the handheld ticket writers for the police department, and this is the budget amendment. And this is being done in a, in a more timely fashion. You know, this should be about the way it's really done. If it's approved in one month, we ought to be coming back the next month with the amendment. So this was really being done on time to amend the budget to account for the expenditure of those funds. There is, and as I mentioned, in the sewer system rehabilitation fund, we just are asking that the budget be increased to reflect the use of those bond proceeds. The same thing with the public works facilities fund, the fire station construction fund, and the recreation center construction fund. And I'll field any questions.
Let me, if I might, let me add something before questions start. These, this budget amendment is providing funds that have already been authorized by this body. What the budget amendment is doing is actually providing a mechanism within the budget to pay, to make these expenditures. They have not, when the council approved them, previously, that the funding mechanism was not established. So that's all this is doing. This is basically housekeeping. Is that a fair?
Yes, sir.
Statement? And this is something that's very normal with other cities. I have a personal preference, and Joel mentioned it earlier, about not having one big amendment to do at the end of the year. Not to say that we won't have any more year-end amendments, we, we probably will, but as far as having amendment of this magnitude is, hopefully, not going to be coming forth anymore. It, it will be amending the budget as the need arises, as Joel mentioned before.
Thank you, Mr. Muir, for your comments. Members of the council, any questions or comments for Mr. Welsh before we open the public hearing? Okay, there being none, thank you, Mr. Welsh, stay close by. There may be some questions from citizens that you may be able to answer. At this time, I'll open the public hearing, and the purpose of this is to secure public comment on these proposed budget amendments, as have just been presented. Is there any member of the audience who wishes to address the council on this subject at this time? Okay, there being none, I close the public hearing, and we're ready now for a motion regarding ordinance number zero-dash-two-double-oh-four-dash-oh-two-one-dash-oh-three. Councilmember Lanford?
Moved for approval of ordinance zero-two-double-oh-four-oh-twenty-one-oh-three, first hearing of the revised budget for year 2003-04.
Okay, we have a motion. Councilmember Sutton?
That's for a second, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion by the council on this subject? Okay, if you will, register your votes, and that passes by unanimous vote. Item number eight is also the first reading. This is a public hearing, and, Mr. Muir, you want to introduce this item on our agenda, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, this is something we've been working on for a couple of months, and James is gonna brief the council and citizens on the possible changes that are coming up forward. James?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As Mr. Muir stated, we've been working on this for several months. Several concerned citizens came to Mr. Muir concerning about redevelopment of their property. This ordinance amendment we bring to you tonight is for the city subdivision ordinance or development ordinance. It allows a property owner to plat out a portion of a previously platted lot that historically in Haltem City, our residential lots are quite large, and this previously platted lot through the years was sold off by meets and bounds conveyances, and possibly could have divided this lot into multiple portions, three or four lots. We've encountered them even five and six parcels located within these previously existing lots. What this ordinance allows for is for that individual, then, to work with the city and then simply replat this portion of a previously platted entire lot.
The council, any questions or comments for Mr. Pulisca before I open the public hearing? Okay, on this item and the one before, we were briefed extensively in pre-council. It sounds like you answered questions of the council. That having been said, I'll open the public hearing at this time regarding this, this amendment, as has been briefly explained by Mr. Pulisca. Do we have any members of the audience who would like to address the council regarding this amendment? Okay, there being none, I'll close the public hearing, and we move now to the corresponding ordinance on the first reading of this ordinance, amending the subdivision ordinance for the city of Haltem City. Councilmember Branson?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we accept on first reading ordinance number oh-two-zero-zero-four-oh-two-oh-dash- fifteen.
Okay, we have a motion. Councilmember Holcomb?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve on first reading. Any discussion? Councilmember Lanford?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank James for his work on this, and, and also our city attorney. They both did real good work here, and this is gonna, really gonna be a, a nice help for citizens, because we've got a lot of property here that has been affected by, by this, and, and I just wanted to say thank you before we vote on this.
Thank you. And I want to make a comment also regarding, regarding this item. I'll give you an illustration of, of how this works. I'm aware, in the southern part of our city, of a complete block, there are eleven houses, eleven lots, eleven houses in that particular block. One of the property owners wants to improve his property, wants to add on and to pour driveway, just make some real nice improvements in an area where it would really be nice if we had some improvements in that particular block and on that part of town. Because that lot, that, that original plat was subdivided by meets and bounds, he has to replat. Well, under the old ordinance that we have, or the one we currently have in place that we're seeking to amend tonight, he has to convince all other ten of the owners of those other lots to replat theirs at the same time, before he can even get started on, on making those improvements. Well, in his case, there are two of the property owners that said, "We could care less whether, whether that's done or not." So what this is, it's just a common-sense solution to a problem that can help us move forward with urban renewal and revitalizing some of the areas. And I think it's a tremendous move for this city, for us to be looking at this and taking action on it. It, we'll see a lot of development that could not occur otherwise.
That's correct, Mayor. Also, it will lower the cost of that individual's budget for their development, whereas before, the cost increased due to the amount of property that they did have to survey and pay for as an incentive for those property owners to come on board and help them with the replat.
Any further comments by the council before I call for the vote? Okay, there being none, if you will, let's, if you'll register your vote, I'll display it at this time, and that passes by unanimous vote. We move now to the visitors and citizens forum. This is a time that's set aside for any person having business before the council that is not scheduled on the agenda to have an opportunity to speak to the council. We have one citizen who has filled out a request to address the council at this time. Each speaker must limit his comments to the subject matter listed on the speaker's request form and must refrain from personal attacks toward any individual. Six minutes with prior notification is, is allowed for this, and three minutes without prior notification, and there has been some question, what is prior notification? When does that occur? And as the presiding officer tonight, we'll go ahead with the allowing of the six minutes to the person who had requested, even though this came in after the, after the meeting had started. But from this time forward, when a speaker's request card is not presented at the time the meeting starts, I will be enforcing the three-minute without prior notification. But since I hadn't clarified that in the past, I wanted to do that tonight, and so our speaker will have six minutes. Mr. Fowler, if you would, if you'll give us your name and address for the record, you wish to speak on the subject of the recreation center completion and the new drainage taxes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I guess I just had a couple of questions for you. Going down Airport Freeway the other day, I noticed that the new Walmart Supercenter in Fort Worth had opened, and I was just curious. It started after our recreation center. I was just gonna see when they think they might be the completion date for the recreation center.
Well, Mr. Fowler, in view of the fact that this item that you're bringing forth was not posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Law, we cannot enter into discussion with you regarding that. Mr. Muir, to answer a question, can he provide factual information, Mr. Attorney?
Yeah, if the city manager has an estimated completion date, then that would be permissible to answer with factual information. But there can be no discussion on this item.
I don't have one right now.
Okay. Is, would I be able to get back with you? Is it something that?
Certainly. I'd, I'd love to know what, when it is. I've given dates and dates and changed the dates and changed the dates, and I'm just not gonna get people's hopes up anymore, yeah.
I mean, we say in spring, can we, can we broaden it to maybe spring or fall?
I am hoping, I am hoping by November.
Okay, so sometime in November.
That's a realistic expectation, but back in April, I thought I had a realistic expectation of what I've given, so you gotta really take that with a grain of salt. But that's, that's my hope. We are making progress with some of the legal issues that we've got with it, and some of the issues that we've got with the various different subs and engineers. But November is hopeful, but don't hold me to it.
Okay, and then my, my second question being, when are y'all planning on discussing the new taxes on the drainage?
That public hearing will be the next council meeting.
So it will be on the next agenda, then?
Certainly. The, the law, in setting that up, we couldn't have one until after we published the entire ordinance in the paper thirty days afterwards, and that was the quickest we could do it, was the meeting for the 27th.
Okay. Then I had one, one other, Mayor, if I could, an update. I had previously, when I'd spoken, one of the, I guess back in May or June, asked about the council being televised or put, or brought out to an open session, to where, as you'd said earlier, Mr. Pulisca, a lot of the information that was brought forth in depth was done in pre-council. A lot of the people and the citizens aren't able to see that during the pre-council meeting. Have y'all done anything else on that as far as putting that on the, on the video or, or doing something, moving, making a movement towards bringing it out to where we can hear the discussion prior to it coming before the council?
No, there's not been any movement to do that. Would, I mean, we'd have to bring the workshop out here.
Is that, is that not possible?
It's, no, it's certainly possible, but I think the council wanted to have the dynamic of, of, of the conference room and the table and the, and the dynamic that is such of sitting around the table.
Was there any way, though, I know in city Fort Worth, some of the other cities, they're, they're, they video that portion of the meeting also. That way, people are, you know, I know a lot of the questions that are asked are done in pre-council, and then the citizens aren't, aren't, you know, don't have the opportunity necessarily, necessarily to hear all the discussion, so.
No, that's very difficult for us to do at this time, with, with the one-man gang that we've got going on right now, and that's extremely difficult for us to do.
Okay, but is, there's been no thought about bringing it out, maybe even on?
Yeah, I think the council's made some consideration to that, and they're, they're comfortable the way it is.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. I believe that's the only citizen who had a request to address the council under the visitor citizens forum. We move now to the boards and commissions. Item number nine is resignations. Do we have any resignations from boards or commissions to be brought forth for ratification at this time? Okay, there being none, we move to item number ten, appointments and reappointments. Councilmember Sutton, I believe you have an appointment to make tonight to, to one of the boards or commissions.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a Mr. Rick Miller from Fenway Court that has submitted an application for the fire services board. I'd like to formally enter his name in for nomination to this board.
Okay, we have Mr. Miller being- Okay, we have Mr. Miller being nominated by Councilmember Sutton for his appointment to the Fire Services Board. We need to ratify that appointment at this time, if the council will express your desire regarding ratification of this appointment, and that is by unanimous vote. Item number eleven is attendance requirements, and as I mentioned at the beginning of the council meeting, with Councilmember Dale Clark being absent tonight because of work responsibilities out of DFW Airport, we do need a motion regarding the wishes of the council about excusing that absence, and Councilmember Hutchison, I believe your light was on first.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would move to permit Mr. Clark to be, have an excused absence for tonight's council meeting.
Councilmember Branson?
Do I need a second?
We have a motion and a second, if you'll register your vote, and that too is a unanimous vote. There are no items for executive session discussion tonight. That being the case, all items on the agenda having been addressed, this meeting of the council is adjourned.